Swooching in.
Ms. Roby, can we start this evening's meeting, please?
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, July 15th, 2015, at 7:30 PM. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski is absent, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Excuse me, this evening I would ask that we remember, as every meeting, all those that are less fortunate in our community than we are locally and globally, ask for our God and Creator to give us the wisdom to, and the proper information, to make the best decisions for the citizens of Erie. And a special thought and prayer, I mean, for all of the, for the trauma in our community. And I won't isolate one situation, but just for the trauma that we've experienced in our community recently, we need a lot of positive energy, a lot of thought, and a lot of prayer for those who are experiencing this firsthand, and all of us who are experiencing it in some way, shape, or form. So remember those things in our time of meditation.
Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the meeting of July 1st, 2015, and bills for payment on July 17th, 24th, and 31st, 2015. Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you. Are there any requests for repository sales today? Are there any requests for repository sales? Are there any requests for repository sales? Hearing none, we will have citizens to be heard, and we do have someone who signed up for the agenda today, Mr. Randy Barnes?
Good evening, Council President, members, administration, guests. My name is Randy Barnes, and my subject tonight is $81,732 free coffee, friends and family. I really appreciate this opportunity to come to the bimonthly meeting of the Friends and Family Group. I know most city councils have a lot of important things they have to address twice a month. I think it's been about a year now that council took on the important job of finding an archivist. And of course, we had to raise taxes last year, council did, because we have things like an archivist. And it's been a year now since we've had an archivist, and I suspect that we're maybe halfway through of archiving these records, I hope. And I hope the council has been able to benefit and do their job much better because of these archived records. I kind of say that in jest, because we know that this was a kind of a Friends and Family kind of thing, where we take care of our friends and maybe our family members. We take a city clerk that worked 48 years, and the day he retired, council said, you know what? We need to keep you around for two more years, and we need to give you $1,000 a month, because the records are a mess. We need these records straightened out, because in the 48 years you worked here, there was no time to fix the records. No time in 48 years. So for $1,000 a month for the next two years, and we're going to raise the public's taxes to make sure we have enough money to pay you, we're going to see that these records get straightened out. And it's going to benefit the city, and the residents, and the taxpayers in some manner. We've yet to see what that is. We did have a report last October, that the city archivist works some hours at home, works some hours down the office here. But we've yet to see some real payback, haven't we? But then again, we don't really have any problems in the city, and we really don't need to have a payback, because we're flushed with cash. And if we want to give our friends and family a little kick, you know, besides, you know, if you can't live on a $68,000 pension, maybe that extra 12 grand a year, that's pretty reasonable. I mean, out of a $65, $70 million budget, that 12 grand a year is really nothing, I guess. Because apparently council felt that way, and reading from the record, it, Mr. Winarsky and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, resolved that Mr. Clem would be retained as a consultant, as a C of Erie archivist, for a two-year period, a retainer of $1,000 a month. And voting yes for council members, Haran Kunco, Jones, Winarsky, and Witherspoon. Those are the four people that decided that the city had enough money that they could afford to give someone $1,000 a month to be an archivist. Now, the last ar- oh, the last archivist, oh, I'm sorry, we never had an archivist. This was a brand-new position, because remember, the city of Erie is flushed with cash, is looking for ways to throw money around. That's why we have a bimonthly meeting of the Friends and Family Group that are standing, sitting in front of me. Because the city of Erie has no problems, they have so much money that they're saying, what is it we've got along with for, since 1851? What have we gotten along with that maybe we could find and throw some money around? How about an archivist? Well, that was, that was, that was probably a good idea, because as I look around the city, things seem to be pretty rosy. And when things are pretty rosy, you can throw money around to your friends and family. And you can throw away $1,000 a month, because $1,000 a month is such a small amount. But it does add up over a year, doesn't it? And we've spent, what, after this month, we spent $12,000 on an archivist, the first one the city's had since 1851, since we were incorporated. And at some point in time, the citizens are going to know how much benefit they receive from having this archivist. Maybe that's the reason we are in the shape we are in today, is because we never had an archivist. Forget the fact that policing, fire department, our first responders, our code enforcement people, forget about all those people, they have all the tools they need to do their job. Hey, thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard today? Other citizens to be heard?
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I'm not going to eat you, I just want to explain a few things to you. I'm hearing that the mayor said that this violence that we're going through now is none of his fault. Might not be none of his fault, but he's adding to it. Those kids need some jobs out there. You know, I was on 21st Street yesterday, and SWAT, SWAT was out there, I don't know what went down. This kid was on a bicycle. There's a way to handle kids. You can handle them the wrong way, and they'll go the wrong way. Now, when I got up there, they had the kid on the ground, sitting on the curb. We asked you, Mr. Macadori and I, we're seen to be the only ones concerned about our kids, about an oversight board. When the police go on a call, somebody go with them, see how the peoples are being treated. Some of them cops out there think that those peoples are inhuman. We're human too. We want to be treated decent. We don't want nobody knocking us down. Cop come up, I don't care who you are, hit the ground. Is he going to get on the ground? Will he get on the ground? Don't ask nobody to do something that you won't do. Hit the ground, I don't care if it's snowed two foot deep out there, or you're in a puddle of water, hit the ground. I'd rather you go and shoot me, because you killing my manhood. You're taking that away from me. When you get to thinking that you're no longer a man, then you don't have nothing to live Treat peoples the way you want to be treated. You are supposed to be over everything, yet you're not doing your job. You're not doing your job. I see things going to get much worse than they are. You think they're bad now. I was talking to a dude from Puerto Rico the other day, and we were talking about what's going on around here. I said, do you, I said, do they do that in Puerto Rico? Where you come from? He said, no, never. I didn't ask him about Mexico, I asked him about Puerto Rico, because that's where he was from. I, I hate to see anybody treated like that. Then, a cruiser came by creeping, they had the kid standing up, and somebody in the cruiser, I guess they're going to recognize him or something, that was the wrong way to go about it. You got that kid standing up there, hey, who's having that cruiser, could say anything. Like, I don't know. I guess, I guess I'm in the dark as far as the way law enforcement works. But I'm telling you, you're going about it the wrong way. Uh-uh. We got to have some representation out there. White folks don't know what's what we want. We know what you want us to have, and that's nothing. They don't want us to have nothing. That's a bad way to go. You're going to have these kids after a while out there, they don't give a damn whether they live or die, because they're going to start, you think you seeing something now. You're not seeing nothing. You're not seeing nothing. They're going to be, they're going to be killing like you swat a fly. Keep treating them like that. That's no way to treat them. They, they need to be treated like, with a little dignity. Why do you think they want a job? They want some money in their pockets. You take babies having babies now? All them babies we bringing over here? I'm saying we, because our tax dollars, somebody tells me, it's not our tax dollars. If it's not our tax dollars, then whose tax dollars are they? We the one work for it. Nonprofit and big businesses in bed together, just like you curl up on your pillow. If you don't address this situation, you're busy trying to make a tourist town, you're going to make a bloodbath. You're working on it. You could take my word for it if you want to. I'm mad, I'm angry, that you all are not addressing these things. You want to be the leader, you're going to be a leader lead. Don't be out there jiving around, this is no time to jive around, you better get serious, because it might be your wife, or your kids. You better get on it.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Hello, citizens, council, administration. My name is Dan Zemieski, reside at 1017 French Street. There are some comments made in the media today, a lot of things have been going on, or not today, but recently, a lot of things have been going on, violence in our streets has continued. It is what it is. But that's the problem in Erie is, from the top down, from count, from, from the mayor, council, and citizens, is everyone acts as if it is what it is. We keep trying the same old ideas, same old types of programs, whether done here, or different areas, with different takes, different variations, different personal angles about existing systems. It is what it is, but it doesn't work. Erie needs leadership and thinking that, that doesn't exist, frankly, from where I'm standing. We, we keep easing pain and addressing the symptoms, but we're not attacking the much bigger problem, what's actually hurting all of us, not just the pain in the streets, but our communities, and cities, and counties, and regions as a whole. We need to start to work together to create new systems that address the causes of poverty. We know when we look at violence, it's poverty. When you have people that look around at the, at the choices available to them, and know it's, it's easier to, to act in violence. Acting in violence isn't just pulling a gun, it's, it's, it's in speech, it's in situations, it's, you know, it's, it's structural, it's personal, it's impersonal, it's, and it's, and scarcity, poverty, is what feeds all of that. And, and no one, I just, I feel like no one is really addressing that, you know? Anytime we want to actually create jobs, keep jobs in Erie, they just keep getting sucked out. And you mentioned of trying to keep contracts in Erie, I keep seeing out-of-town contractors come in and build these public projects that end up benefiting, you know, developers from Detroit, or architects from Pittsburgh, and it's, you know, at least, if you're not going to keep, if we're not going to keep our own money in our own pocket, at least keep it in the family. We're not even doing that. We really are doing it to ourselves with this, it is what it is attitude, but it doesn't have to be that way. We can change things, we can do things differently, and create different ways, different systems of providing us the things that we all need. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard today?
Good evening, Council. I'm Sonya Arrington, 1743 Glendale Avenue. Our community is in crisis. All this violence going on is sad and is senseless. We have many issues that's going on out there, but everybody need to understand, we can only address one issue at the, at a time. And our biggest issue is the violence. But after this last incident this weekend, you know, that really saddens my heart. Now this is turning into a race thing, and it shouldn't be about race. When it comes to me, I'm colorblind, because all I know is somebody 18-year-old son was shot and killed. And it's sad. For those of you who are on Facebook, if you see the many postings that's going up, it's sad. And I hate to see it coming to that, because you know what? Right now, we are more divided than we have ever been. And I'm all about taking a negative and turning it into a positive, and even on Facebook, you know, I try to tell them, this isn't about race. This is about a young man who is headed down the right track, doing the right things, and life ended suddenly and sadly. I feel for both sides. We have a 14-year-old who's sitting in the Erie County prison, 14. He shouldn't be in no Erie County prison, he should be at Edmund L. Thomas or something, until it's time for his hearing. We got a lot of stuff going on, but right now, at the, at the top of our list is the stuff on racism, and I don't like it at all. We all need to learn how to agree to disagree. But at the end of the day, it's all about bringing the peace, love, and hope back to our community, unite next one, and unify. And, and me and my husband learned one thing, what don't break you, make you stronger. And even though our community is in crisis, we can grow stronger if we work together. God bless.
Thank you. Any other citizens to be heard this evening? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Any other citizens to be heard? Not seeing any. Ms. Roby, would you like to continue with the rest of the meeting?
All right, ordinances for first reading. Council file number 15925, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $25,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue, imparding for the expenditure thereof, police, drug, and vice By Mrs. Haran Kunso, and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the council file ordinance number 15925, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. City Council read and adopt, council file ordinance number 15925 by A6, nay zero, on Council file number 15926, an ordinance, amending ordinance number 261958, the traffic code of the city of Erie, by the installation of stop signs at seven intersections. And I just want to make note that the agenda in the original ordinance had three, but that was a mistake, so it is actually seven intersections. By Mr. Murzky, and seconded by Mr. Brennan, the council file ordinance number 15926, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. Council file read and adopt, council file ordinance number 15926 by A6, nay zero, on Thank you. That'll take us to new business.
Mr. President.
Ms. Kunso?
I'll move the balance of the agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Mr. President.
Mr. Winarsky, second. Do we have any separations? Hearing none. Ms. Roby, if we want to vote on that?
Okay, voting on the balance of the, moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Murzky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan. That'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Roby. If we could begin with Mr. Witherspoon today. Oh, I'm sorry. I interrupted, he was contrarian on the second chair. Mr. Witherspoon, do you have a report today?
Thank you, Mr. President, no report.
No report. Mr. Murzky.
Just a few things to report on. It was announced this week that the Erie Otters got a new owner. He was in town today. We are very pleased that he is committed to keeping the otters in Erie. Tomorrow, at the Convention Center Authority meeting, we, the Convention Center Authority will be voting on transferring the lease for the otters to, to the new owner. I wanted to, also on the Convention Center, just make note that we do have a meeting tomorrow. Just some information, the new hotel's going up, we have 117 good-paying jobs, most of them are local jobs, and family-sustaining jobs on construction. And we just got a report from the managing operator of the Convention Center, that 17 groups have booked at the new hotel already for 2016, and another 12 groups have booked for 2017. So the hotel is already, before it's even built, bringing in new groups of people to Erie that might not have come before. I also attended the Matt V. community meeting that Mrs. Arrington put on, the Booker T. Washington Center. It was very good to hear and to see the community out, and the community caring. But as one of the speakers said, now it's time for us to put our money where our mouth is, and we can't just talk about it, we have to, to get involved. We had another wake-up call this week. We keep having wake-up call after wake-up call after wake-up call. And how many calls do we need? And it's not just government, it's everybody working together. This one for me was personal, this was the first one for me in a long time that was personal, because I taught the young man who passed away. And, and two lives were lost that day, like Mrs. Arrington said. And the frustrating thing for me is, as a teacher, we, we can identify at-risk youth early on, and then we put them in the suspension, and we put them in alternative ed, but we don't help them to turn it around. And that's something that's going to take all the social service agencies in Erie to really step up and work together with the district, with the parents, and we have to, we're all doing our own thing, and there are all good things individually in individual silos, but we could do amazing things for our young people if we all work together. It's going to take putting egos aside, it's going to take putting little fiefdoms aside, but, but it needs to be done for the betterment of this community. And that's all I'm going to say today. I mean, I, I just, you know, it's, like I said, it's, it's a sad, two lives were lost, and it's just sad. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murzky. Ms. Kunso?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to follow up on what Mr. Murzky's saying, I attended the session two that was held by Matt V., and I certainly appreciate the opportunity to listen to the community, and there were many members of the community there speaking out. It is very clear that there are a lot of people who care and who want to do something. We need, obviously, a strategy and a program where people can have a role and know what their role is. We talk a lot about people should be doing something, the community should be doing something, the neighborhood should be doing something. Somebody needs to define the something. And we did hear from the mayor's assistant today about the press conference. Unfortunately, we were not invited ahead of time due to some glitch, but we did hear that the chief and the deputy chief will be working on a strategy, and we have our intentions to meet with the chief and give our two cents in the help with the development of the strategy. But we really need to take an active role, create a new approach, look for best practices, and move forward with a strategy to reduce this violence. The teenagers with guns, for, for a while back, we would talk with the chief, and he would say, well, these are 20-somethings, young 20s, these were, these are kids who were not teenagers, you know, and now it's going down and down, and younger kids are getting involved. So certainly, I look forward to seeing and developing that strategy and making things happen for our community. And I know Mr. Winarsky is going to speak to the chief about meetings, so that's all I can say about that. Couple of things going on in the community that I was involved with, the Erie Insurance opened the Armory Building to the public, that was a building that they have renovated back to original state, that was the home of the, I think, 92nd, Dave, I'm trying to remember, 92nd Infantry? Anyway, it's the oldest infantry in the United States, was housed out of that building. They did a beautiful job with renovating, restoring the building back to its original state, over 100 years old, the building is from 19, 19, I can't remember. Huh? Uh-oh. Anyway, so they've restored the building, so appreciate them, they're good neighbor. I know, I can't, I have to write it down, I'm starting to look, I can't remember. But Erie Insurance has really been a great partner and an anchor in our community. They also are embarking on a comprehensive plan for their future, and we did talk with them about how they're including some partners from the city in making their comprehensive plan, because obviously, it's very important that the city work with them as a, as our Fortune 500 company, and we want to value their input and work with them to keep them stable, and encourage them to continue investing in our downtown area. So we thank them for everything they've done. I did notice a piece of legislation that is, is kind of going around in, in Pennsylvania, it's under consideration, which might be helpful to us in cities regarding code complaints, where you could, they would change the law from where you have four, you get four code complaints before you can go for a criminal, before it can be a criminal, criminal act, and instead it would go down to two. So that's- things of that nature that affect our blight and the look of our city. So that's something that's being talked about. Who knows whether it'll go through. Also, I had the opportunity to learn about a program called, it's called EZ Program. It's an energy efficiency program that is, is an opportunity for municipalities throughout Erie County and also government entities, so authorities and different governmental agencies, to look for energy savings. School districts, different groups can participate, so I really encourage people to get involved with that. There's also loans available through the County Redevelopment Authority, and I did share that with our Parking Authority as they're going to be going through a renovation, that they ought to look to these energy efficiencies as well. And the other note to just make was that I want to thank the Public Works Department. And I know you just returned from your travels, but things are cleaned up in the creek at Norman Way. So I appreciate that. Thank you to the Public Works Department. And that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Kunso. Mr. Jones.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. President. Received some calls from one particular citizen who had some pretty valid concerns related to some issues with the water authority, and some things that we actually discussed before about a year or so ago in relation to landlords being left with bills of tenants who refuse to pay them. So even if they're in their name, and I'm doing a little research now, but said that even if the water is in the tenant's name and they decide to not pay it, it goes automatically back to the property owner, which I think is the case. And so there were some questions on, is there a way of changing that, adjusting that? So we're doing some research on that. So I just wanted to articulate that to the few citizens that were concerned about that issue and one in particular, so we're looking into that. I also attended the event at the Booker T. Washington Center Ms. Arrington and others put on. Greatly appreciate that effort, that she has always, that she has been, and her family, her husband, Steve, what you're doing in the community, and what other groups are doing in the community is really important stuff. The mayor has done a lot of things that didn't make the media, this council as individuals have done different things in our own spheres of influence outside this desk and outside these chambers to try to make things better. As bad as things are, I can't imagine how bad they would be if there weren't so many groups trying to do something. So that's commendable. I guess the issue is, part of the issue is that we seem to be looking for the golden ticket. Like, what's the program? You know what I mean? What's the thing? And I don't know that there is a thing or the thing, because why one young person is committing a violent act may be a totally different set of situations why the other? There's no one thing. But I think, and I never thought I'd become the person, like, the old people when I was growing up, they say, "Well, when I was coming up." But there's some things that worked. There were people who corrected me when I was a smart-mouth kid, like, and they said something to me. They weren't afraid of me. And there were guns back then, I can remember, well, I won't get into that, but there were guns in the nineties when I were coming up. It was a big gang time in the country in the nineties. People were dying left and right then, too. But I think part of the issue is that we are looking for something great to happen in the organic, the reality that organically things can change at the community level. Every single one of us sees a kid or a young person or has one in our family that we can talk to. This is not black, white. It's kids. These gentlemen stopped me, I'd be done, because I'd get emotional, then I'd get upset, and then I'd just be going off on tangents. But this is what hit me. A gentleman who happened to be white says to me at the wire, he said, "Hey, I saw, I know your blue coats program and different people Mrs. Arrington's doing, and this is happening, this is happening." And he said, "You know, it's not just a black thing, though." And this gentleman happened to be white. He said, "My son," who was thirteen at the time, "had gotten into an argument at a court and came home and told his dad, 'This guy's a jerk, and this guy, we had this big argument,' said, 'Man, I wish I had my knife.'" You know, we say, we're talking about guns, but, you know, a knife could take a life, too. It's the mindset that I wanted to deal with this dispute in an aggressive way. And we have to be able to, and this parent was able to talk to his son and say the things that he said as a good parent, et cetera. But we don't have enough people talking to kids. We have meetings respectfully, I'm not, this is not an indictment, this is not a negative criticism. We have meetings, and very few of the people we're talking about are in the room. So we're coming up with strategies for people who don't, who we think need X, Y, and Z, but they're telling us, obviously, they need A, B, and C, because, you know, we've been giving them X, Y, and Z for years. Basketball programs helps a certain group. This program, jobs programs, helps a certain group. Some of these, some people just need to be grabbed up and reminded later in the, hold on, slow down, because that's what kept me off the street. My parents grabbed me up, but not only did my parents grab me up, I had teachers in the school that weren't afraid of me and said, "You better calm yourself down." So I think it's multiple things that we need to do, but I think at the core of it, each of us needs to reach out and do something. Don't get paralyzed with trying to analyze what to do. Just do something. Just love somebody. Just be nice to a kid. Just be, just do something, because it has value to it. And who knows if you, you talk to that fourteen-year-old thirty minutes before, who knows if the world is different for our community, just in that short conversation? So thank you for that little extra time. I appreciate it. But let's just all do something and stop waiting for the golden ticket. There's no more of those. We have to go out and make it happen. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Winarsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, once again, everyone. Naturally, this is an easy topic for any one of us on council to talk about, but, you know, naturally, we've heard from our other council members here, but what we're going to do is set something up with the police chief. The mayor came forward today with the police chief, trying to initiate a different plan than what we have. Naturally, in life, what plan may have worked last year isn't going to work this year, maybe, or doesn't work as well this year. So I think with the collaboration of all of us, maybe there's something we can gain. I, the mayor's counting on the chief to use his resources. I'm hoping our city council here can be one of those resources. Not the total answer, but maybe just an idea, a thought or something we can implement into trying to solve what's been happening here. It hurts everyone, so with that being said, CAS is a liaison to the police chief, but I am going to ask our president, Mr. Brennan, to try to set something up ASAP, not wait till our next meeting, but try to have it within the week. And knowing our police chief, he'll probably oblige quite well, and we'll move forward from there. I know Jessica mentioned about the dedication of the Armory on Sixth and Prairie Street. Erie Insurance and the Pennsylvania Historic Commission did put a historic marker there, which is naturally pretty cool on Sixth Street there, to honor, and it's the one-hundred-twelfth, the National Guard, one-hundred-twelfth Infantry Regiment. But just like Jessica had also mentioned, I mean, Erie Insurance is not only a good neighbor, a great neighbor for the city of Erie. They are investing in the city from different buildings, renovations, and by them doing that, that helps keep jobs in Erie. So I want to thank, thank you again, Erie Insurance, for what you do for our community. We're on the shore this weekend. Plain and simple. I mean, they're roaring outside right now, but I know it can be a little inconvenience for some of the local residents, but as the saying goes, please look twice. There's a lot of motorcycle traffic out there, but also keep in mind that millions of dollars come into our community by having this function here, and we're fortunate enough, we're big enough, and we're capable enough to do this, and at no expense to the city of Erie. Is that correct, Ms. Beck?
There's an expense.
You let us know what that is, okay. I did attend my first block party last week. I know there's been a few of those. And I did the Eight Grade Tuesday yesterday. That was my first one this year. Great organized events, great organized crowds, no trouble, I mean, and free. It does, you don't have to live in the city of Erie to go to these things. They are free events, and come join us. It's a good time, and it's free. Remember, free. Oh, we also want to remember the Niagara League and the Erie Chamber for sponsoring the fireworks this year. It's always nice to have fireworks in the city of Erie, and I just want to recognize them for doing that for us and for the citizens. Other than that, I got family coming in. Texas, Colorado, Ohio, Maryland. They're not biking in on their motorcycles, but they are coming in for a wedding for my nephew, and just want to wish my nephew Jake Winarsky and his soon-to-be bride, Ally, good luck. With that, good night.
Thank you, Mr. Winarsky. Ms. Tenkavish, any report today? No report this evening? Ms. Beck, any report this evening?
Following up on what Councilman Winarsky mentioned, of course, we're on the shore is happening. We hear it outside of the windows through Saturday evening. It is benefiting the Erie County home for children and adults, so please keep that in mind as we are inconvenienced and deal with the noise and influx of visitors to our great city, and show them a good time, and keep in mind the benefiting charity. Bikes are everywhere. They're all over the county. They're in New York. They're in Ohio. Slow down. Be cognizant of your surroundings. You might not see them. They might not see you. Just be aware that we do have lots of people who don't know the roads. We have lots of construction happening in the area. So as Mr. Winarsky said, look twice and hopefully save a life. The dog park is about to open, and hopefully, we have a date slated for next week, a tentative date of January, excuse me, July twenty-second. It might feel like January, but it's July twenty-second. We couldn't have done this without the support of city council and other agencies. We're hoping that this date will come to be and we'll finally see the park come to fruition, which is what so many people in the city have asked for. Last thing, as Mayor Sinon expects to bring his mid-year report, his 2015 mid-year report to council next meeting, which is Wednesday, August fifth, at nine a.m., so he'll be here for that. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple items to report here is, for the Parking Authority, we had a study session a couple weeks ago. We discussed the current system that we have, the current system of collecting fees, paying tickets, all that. Upgrades are being kind of reviewed right now. Modernizations are being reviewed, raising fees to be more in line with comparable-sized cities is discussed. But the goal is really to try and make it easier to park in downtown Erie and to find more revenue to fund improvements. We'll be talking about that, you know, as we go forward. There'll be more discussion on that. Regarding the incident that happened this past Saturday, and, you know, any incidents that happened prior to this with the gun violence in Erie, first of all, my condolences to the family and loved ones of the young man that was killed this past Saturday. As everyone's been saying on council here, we need to work together as a community to stop this violence. You know, obviously, what we're doing is not working well. You know, I don't know if it's more policing, more finding more opportunities to lead our young people, but we definitely need to act. I've been asked my thoughts about the mayor's press conference. I was out of town. I have not heard yet, but I definitely will listen to the recording, whatever was said this afternoon. Also, throughout the week, while I've been gone, out of town, I've been asked questions about what can council do? What should we be doing? What we aren't doing? And, you know, of course, there's a whole, there's many items that have been discussed in the past, and as Mr. Jones mentioned, there's, it's not going to be one golden answer to this whole situation. It's going to be a series of things that are currently going on or should be going on. But, you know, definitely, we need to work with administration to advocate for funding for groups that are providing resources and services to our community. Look into, I know that Erie County is considering the gun buyback program. Yeah, I've heard good and bad. Whether it works or not, I'm not sure, but definitely, it's worth looking into. Advocate for more diversity in our police force is definitely something that's been discussed, and I want to definitely talk about that further. But, you know, what can individual council members do? I've been also asked that, because a lot of people, a lot of council members are doing a lot of things. Work with neighborhood groups on projects to improve neighborhoods. There's a lot of things going on in our city. Assist groups with finding resources, make connections. I think a lot of people just, they don't know where to go to, where to turn to, so we need to definitely provide those resources. Mentor our youth. Our youth, that's something that's very important. A lot of kids out there just don't have someone to look up to. They don't have someone that's going to kind of help lead the way, so that's very important. I know Ms. Arrington has been doing that for quite a long time, and I mentioned to her that I'd love to participate when I could, and I'd love to do that. What can our residents do? That's been another discussion, you know, that everyone should be working together as a community. I think just joining a neighborhood watch group and participating in your neighborhood is very important. Or even volunteer for a nonprofit group in the city, any nonprofit group that's providing services. Reporting suspicious activities in the neighborhood is also important. And if you cannot volunteer, some people can't, can't do this type of things, maybe donate to an organization. That is helping and improving our city. So again, just, those are kind of my thoughts. Of course, I don't have the exact answer, but I definitely want to do what I can to make the city a safer place and have, give hope to our youth. And with that, thank you.
City Council adjourns at eight twenty-one. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Haran Kunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.